There are town hall style meeting and so we want to take questions from the floor. One of the changes that we're making as of starting with tonight's meeting is we also wanted to put a couple topical information things out there. And so those of you that are interested in some things that are coming forward, you're welcome to come in here. Tonight, we're going to talk a little bit about the Jackson Boulevard project and we're going to talk a little bit about the restructuring of our fire department and then we'll open the floor for just open forum kind of conversations. We have a number of department heads here, city council members, the mayor is here and so we have, we have a lot of the individuals that can answer any of those questions that you have. So when we get to that, I'll cover that portion. Starting off, Mayor Dan Boak, say a couple things and then we'll get underway with our topics.
Thanks, Joe. Well, first, thanks for coming. It's a little cold outside. We're not sure who is going to be able to brave it once they got home and their warm homes actually come back out. So thank you very much for doing that. We, like Joe said, we're going to talk about Jackson Boulevard, kind of looking at 2017 and what's coming up. And so doing that and then, you know, one of the big, big things this year was the fire department restructuring and itself. And so there's, there's some updates and the chief is going to talk about that. It's been a very busy year for the city of Spearfish. We had, we have, you know, half of the council is brand new and so there have been a lot of changes. There's, of course, Spearfish is growing and so there are a lot of different issues that pop up and that we need to take care of and definitely we'll talk about any of that if you have any questions on what's going on in Spearfish. But we thought we would kind of go over what's, what's ahead of us first and then, and then address any questions or concerns you have, okay?
And we'll do a few introductions a little bit later, but right now I'll introduce Kyle Mathis, our city engineer, and he's going to give us an overview of the Jackson Boulevard project and exactly timelines and where we're at in that process.
Kyle? Thanks, everybody, for coming tonight. I know it's a little cold out, so I'll try to be interesting, informative. This will be probably a two to three hour presentation, so it'll be very formal and very informative, so I hope these are all comfy seats today. I'm Kyle Mathis. Like we said, I'm a city engineer. I've been here for about 12 years and we've done a lot of, lot of good projects in the city over the years and this will be another one. It's, it's going to be a really key, important project for the city and I think everyone involved in it is going to be happy to put their stand by and see what it's going to look like in a few years here. So my presentation will be about 15, 20 minutes, I promise, and hopefully it'll be fairly interesting and informative. I'll just basically be focusing on the project background, the scope, who our design team is consisting of and give you a little timeline on design, going through design, bidding and construction. And this is all obviously tentative, but I think we've got a pretty good plan in place, so hopefully I'll keep on scheduling what we're thinking. As far as the project background, everybody here probably knows that Jackson Boulevard is the city's most prominent east-west corridor, located through the heart of downtown and it functions as the main gateway into our community from Interstate 90. This aging roadway has substantial wear and cracking and is in major need rehabilitation. Everybody can look down and see the condition of that. We've wanted to do this project for quite a few years and so am I putting in some tuition. The corridor also lacks adequate, adequate street lighting along various stretches of the road, contains areas with storm sewer systems which lack adequate collection and mains capacity. And a considerable portion of the boulevards consist primarily of hard surfacing like concrete and asphalt and they really lack areas of vegetation and landscaping primarily west of Main Street and the commercial area especially. And we also have a substantial amount of existing infrastructures such as water and sewer mains that are aged and very dated. They're actually, may consist of obsolete pipe material and those pipes are near the end of their life expectancy, so we want to get those out from underneath our new roadway before, before we fix the road. Proposed scope, how are we going to fix all this stuff? What are we going to do? Again, obviously what we'll be doing, roadway rehabilitation, utility infrastructure replacement and improvements, as well as gateway corridor and streetscape enhancements within the Jackson Boulevard corridor primarily from exit 12, 1.1 miles west through University Intersection. And I'll get a little more specific in these improvements in our scope in a little bit, but who are, where are we at? Who are, who's going to be doing this for us? We have just recently hired AE2S as our consultant, primary consultant, to do the design for this project. They are, they're in charge of putting together a construction plan set that contractor can use and build for the improvements we want to make along this corridor. This is a pretty big project, so they have a couple of subs that they'll be working with. One of them is Tallgrass Landscaping out of Rapid City. He's done a lot of good work in the area. And also Olson and Associates who live out of Omaha that's doing the traffic, traffic analysis and traffic report. So we feel we have a very good team. We've worked with AE2S a lot and they've done a great job for us. They're one of, they've got a very good reputation in not just this state, but regionally in the five states, five city area here. So we hope that translates into a successful project on this one. Getting back into the scope, I'll go a little more specific into these improvements. Roadway improvements, we obviously will be doing crack repair, asphalt concrete patching in the really bad areas, cold milling in asphalt concrete, overlay of the streets, very similar to what you've just seen in, in Ransdale and other projects we've done. We'll be replacing any bad concrete curve, gutter, driveways, pellets, pans, things like that. We'll analyze all the handicap ramps and those that are not ADA compliant, we will make compliant. And obviously when we're all done with all that, we'll restry the roadway when it's all brand new and nice. Bridge repairs, we, from our 2015 inspection report on Jackson Street Bridge, we have a few minor repairs that we need on it. It's in pretty good shape, but we will also be incorporating those repairs in this project. And it's, it's a very good functioning structure, however, it's a little ugly, so hopefully we can make a few enhancements to make it a little more tasteful and blend into whatever streetscape and we're going to do around the area. The curb tapers on each side of that bridge, there have been a few accidents over the years where people have not paid attention to the road narrowing and so we'll, we'll try to straighten out those tapers and lessen that issue also. Street lighting improvements, as I said, that's, that's an issue through town there. We will review the lighting spacing and add lighting where it's needed. We will look at traditional versus LED lighting. Right now, we don't have a whole lot of LED lighting in there. The upfront costs are a little bit more, but typically LED lighting pays for itself over two, three, four years as far as the same as you can have with the electricity you use. And we'll also be looking at wood pole replacement versus distilled poles that we can afford. All this is based on how much we can afford in our budget, obviously, but that is our wish list and we're going to try to make it feasible to do all that. School crossing, we have an existing school crossing to the kindergarten between Eighth Street and State Street. It's functioned well over the years. It's pretty old, but we'd like to replace that with the rapid flash and beacon system. Those are, we put three of those up in the last few years. Two of them are north of the high school on Hillsview, one crossing at York Main and one at the Red Path. We just put one on St. Joe, also by Black Hill Stadium. That, they really get your attention and they seem to be a little more effective than the old, old PED signals, so we'll be replacing. The gateway corridor, streetscape landscaping improvements, this is probably what most people are going to be interested in. Nobody's going to care about the infrastructure underneath except me. I'll be excited about that a little bit. You know, we'll be looking at boulevard indoor median improvements by use of vegetation, plantings, street trees, street furniture, maybe colored, colored concrete, sidewalk alignment, et cetera, et cetera. And I'll get a little bit more into that later. Water, water main and service line replacement. Any old cast iron pipe will remove and replace. Most of the services underneath Jackson are thought to be copper, so that's a good material. We'll probably just reconnect those to the new mains, but if it happens to be something else like the alternized steel, we will replace that with copper or plastic and take it out from under faster roadway to make sure we don't have any old outdated infrastructure in the main bit. We'll also be reviewing fire hydrants, seeing if they're functional, what the age of them are. If they're fairly old, we'll probably replace them and we'll also review hybrid spacing to make sure we're up to current codes. If we are not quite meeting that spacing, we'll add as many hydrants as we need to ensure proper fire protection. The sanitary sewer main and services, same thing. The old stuff goes. We've got a lot of vitrified plate pipe sewer mains in town. Not all of them, but most of them under Jackson Boulevard are plate. So we'll be looking at replacement from two different methods. We're in the process of analyzing and looking at the mains. We camered all of the mains within the project area and we're looking at the condition of them right now. If they're in good condition, we would be able to line them with a cureden, using a cureden placed pipe. That, you actually used that in the Ramsdale project a couple of years ago. All it is, is you basically go from manhole to manhole and put a liner from panel to manhole, they cut it, they introduce steam in and they harden that and it turns into a pipe that's within the other pipe. Very good, very good option. If, if those pipes are not in good condition, we'll have to open cut and replace it with PVC. That means tearing up the road, digging a trench, tearing out the old stuff and putting in PVC. Obviously, our preference is lining everything we can. It's much more convenient for the public, minimizes road closure time, the longevity and life expectancy is pretty much the same as PVC pipe open cut method and the costs are very comparable between the two. So we'll be making determinations of that. All manholes that are not concrete, we'll be replacing. We still have a few brick and rock manholes in the, in the area too, so just updating everything before we make everything fancy on the surface. Storm drainage improvements, we could probably do improvements all the way along this corridor for storm drainage. This old part of town is very, very lacking in storm sewer, storm drainage. It wasn't thought of when these areas were developed a long time ago. The city's made a lot of improvements in these areas based on a master plan that was done in 1999, but the storm drainage is very expensive, so we're wanting as much bang for our buck on this project, so we're probably going to be focusing primarily in the area around Spearfish Creek, about a block east of the Spearfish Creek in that Jackson Boulevard Bridge, around Third Street area. That's the low, low point on the east side of Jackson, right in this area by Arby's and we'll take that all the way to the west and hopefully make some improvements up to at least Ames and we're hoping to get up to St. Joe depending on budget. And I'll show you the primary reason why we're focusing on this area, if I can find my, there we go, too many things open. Okay, these are a couple storms that have happened in the recent past. This one is June of 2013. This is probably about a half an hour after the storm. It was a very intense, very intense storm and it basically shut down the intersection right by Arby's. This is looking northwest from Arby's Restaurant. Took quite a while for this to drain down. There are inlets and storm sewer in this area, but they, they obviously exceeded their capacity and the roadway, they just stayed on the roadway until it got high enough and kicks down Third Street here. So you just, you can see here where it's coming down Third Street. This is looking back up Jackson Boulevard to the east. Lot of, lot of drainage. This isn't even near a 100-year storm event either, so obviously some drainage issues in there. It doesn't happen very often, but it does happen. This is a storm in June of 2008. We're looking at the intersection of Iris and Ames Street. This is Ames. Iris is this way looking west. This drainage you're seeing here is primarily from the Hungry Hollow, Big Drainage Basin. We have a pipe right here that collects that drainage, but it does not take up a very high volume of, of the storm. So anything that, once it exceeds capacity, the, the street basically takes over for conveyance. So that's why you see all this water coming down Ames Street right here. Same goes with St. Joe right here. This is Jackson Boulevard looking south to St. Joe. You also have a lot of water from that basin coming here. Again, this area was involved with a lot of thought about drainage. This is looking east at the same intersection of St. Joe and then we keep going east down towards, down towards the bridge. This is Ames Street. You can see that the primary conveyance element is the street, that the storm sewer can't handle all this flow. So, and then we get down into the little area on the west side by the bridge. This is Chainsaw Center over here in the motel. Get to the other side, Tucko John's. It's basically an island there. Again, these aren't, these are probably handed up 15-year storm events, about 100 here. This is on Jackson Boulevard Bridge looking north. There's the Red Path that's all the way up to the top of the wall right there going on the underpass. Looking south, same way, but it's a lot of flow. So these are obviously our worst areas in that, as far as storm drainage, so we want to concentrate those areas and make improvements in there. Hopefully we can move some more, more water out of that area and make it a better situation and, and these occurrences occur less frequently. We'll never, we'll never be able to collect a 100-year storm. It just won't happen, but we can make, we can make it better, so we'll try that. The other thing we want to do with these storm drainage improvements, and we put a few of these in in the past and we just put a couple in on the Ramsdale project, they're called CDS units. We put those in right before the storm pipe goes into Spearfish Creek. And what these units do, they have basically a manhole and they have internal components that clean the storm water. They take out sediment, garbage, some oils, things like that, and it cleans the water up before it comes into Spearfish Creek. And we all know that's one of our most valuable assets here in town and we want to keep it as clean as possible, so we've kind of been incorporating that and anytime we can afford to, we will put CDS units on anything that will be jumping into, into the creek here. We have a couple of existing inlets here that are already, or outlets, sorry, outlets that we'll be hopefully putting CDS units on too.
How often do those actually clean up?
We actually schedule to clean those out a couple times a year. We like to clean them out. Obviously, the heaviest storms are in the spring and early summer, so we try to clean them out in between there sometime and then if we, if we get time, we'll try to clean them out in the fall. And they do collect a lot of material. Our jet truck backs up and sucks all of, all of that stuff out of those, so. Let's see, in addition, we'll also have traffic signal improvements. We're going to take a look at our existing signals at Ames Street and at Canyon Street, make improvements to those. Those are older signals, so we'll either remove and replace them or update them to make them compliant with current MUTCD standards, federal state standards. And along with that, in the traffic analysis, we'll also be looking at some other intersections, especially 10th Street and University. We've probably seen some equipment on some of these intersections. They're, they're currently doing traffic counts and they'll, they'll help analyze these intersections and see what improvements, if any, we need to make on those. Might not necessarily be a signal, it might be some lane reconfiguration. It might be fine as, as is, so we'll analyze that and make recommendations and then we'll incorporate it into the design and get it constructed. We'll also look at the horizontal alignment of Jackson Boulevard around that Ames Street area. There's some pretty tight horizontal corners there. We hope to possibly straighten those out and make that a little, a little smoother toward around that area there. And traffic calming, we're looking at traffic calming measures, especially at the entrance of, coming in from exit 12. You know, our, our street is, has four lanes and parking on both sides. It's nearly 75 feet wide there. It's very inviting to just fly through town, which I never do that. But so we're, we'll be looking at traffic calming methods there and maybe we can incorporate those with some streetscaping stuff too, so. And then they'll also be, you know, we're not only looking at vehicular when we're looking at the traffic analysis, we're looking at vehicles, we're looking at pedestrians, we're looking at bikes on this, possible bike routes, possible, you know, where can pedestrians cross safely? It's not just about vehicles on this project either, so they will make some recommendations on all that too. Quickly, I will just go through, I know I'm probably running over on time, so I just want to kind of go through a quick timeline as far as design and construction. This was prepared by our consultant. It's a proposed project design schedule. It's, it's general, it's rough, but it keeps, gives us goals to shoot for here. We've already met with them in early November. The consultant has-
Can you enlarge that hole?
Yeah, yeah. I know you guys-
Is it going to be a problem out of it?
Yeah, it's going to be really hard.
Oh, okay.
I will, I will read off.
Okay.
And I'll bring my, here's a great pointer too. Okay, the top one is just a project kickoff meeting with the consultant, which we've already done. It was in early November. Since then, the consultant has done a topographic survey. They've surveyed the whole area. You've probably seen them out there. They're in the middle of doing the traffic counts, so they're gathering information. We've provided a lot of field information to them about our infrastructure too, so they're going to use all this and, and begin the design. But in between that, they'll start their drainage review and traffic analysis report and they'll also start thinking of some ideas on the streetscape. However, we won't get, we won't dive into that too much until we have a couple of public meetings because we want to get the public involved and get their input too, especially the people adjacent to the project. Tentatively, we're, we're looking at a public meeting for the streetscape in January and one in February. I talked to the consultant here this last week and we're trying to nail down some, eight times and places for those. I'd encourage everybody to look at our website. Our homepage will have a link, probably right down below the exit 14 DOT project for Jackson Boulevard and we'll have updates on our progress and we'll have meeting information, things like that. So please take a look, spread the word. We encourage people to come and, and help us figure out what we want this to look like. So once, once we get through that stuff, they will submit a drainage review and traffic analysis report to the city. We'll take a review and we'll make final determinations on what we, what we decide we want to have improvements in those areas. They'll, they'll make recommendations with tentative costs on those too, so. Once we determine that, they can utilize that to finalize design. Same goes with the streetscape concept plan. Once they get through these public meetings, we'll also be meeting with other stakeholders like Black Hill State, adjacent homeowners and we'll just be circling that and getting a good identity, identification on what we want for streetscaping. And eventually, they'll, they'll pile that together and get a final streetscaping plan hopefully by the end of April for us to incorporate into the design. Again, it's going to be based on people's ideas and budget. Unfortunately, that dollar amount, that money always comes up. From there, they'll, they'll submit 50% construction plans and a cost estimate probably by the end of May. We'll take a look at that and make sure we have everything in there that we wanted for improvements and then the, their updated cost estimate will provide us a possibility for updating our budget on it if we need to. Currently, we have an estimated budget of about 3.1 to 3.2 million for the project. We'll know more of a scope by then and we'll have a pretty good solid number. We want to go into the budget with a good number, so we don't, we don't have any surprises to follow up here. With that, then they'll incorporate any of our comments, then they'll finalize the plans, look at them one more time and we hope to have it out to bid by early December of next year. And then after that, if everything goes well and we're getting the prices we, we want, we're hoping for good weather and we hope the contractor can get out there by early February of 2018 to begin. Prior to them starting or maybe concurrent, we will run public meetings, especially, especially for the adjacent property owners and let them know what we're doing, you know, sequencing, what the contractor's going to be doing when, to get them a little more informed of how it's going to affect them during construction. We're hoping for a good construction season. We're going to need a whole construction season to hopefully be substantially complete by the end of 2018 and early December. If we have bad weather, we're likely going to spill over into 2019, but with any luck, if we've got, if we've got seasons like we have the last two, we can do that. And then we'll just do some minor cleanup and stuff the next year and get, get everything finalized by early June. And with that, that's, that's pretty much the synopsis. We hope to stay on that timeline and I'll, I'll open it up any questions if you have any. Yes?
In your pictures of, of the flooding that you had, I noticed that there was some debris along the roads as you would expect with any flood event, you know, things getting washed out. Does the city currently have somebody on call like they do for snow events where they would go and clean out those storm sewer entrances so that we can, you know, one of the questions that I would have is, is our existing infrastructure for storm, storm events being utilized? If they're getting clogged up, water's just running past them and we're not, you know, utilizing the existing-
Exactly. That's a good question and, you know, it's one of the things the city has not done very well on in the past, but we are, is keeping our storm sewer systems clean. They're, they're hard to clean, they're hard to push the sediment out, but it's taking up the capacity of those, those pipes and the inlets when, when they're filled with that stuff. You're not getting as much flow as you normally could through there. So we do have a program now, our water and sewer guys are trying to clean those. I think we're trying to get through the city every, once every-
Let Cheryl jump in on this.
Three years maybe.
Cheryl Johnson, our Public Works Administrator can give you a little more background on our programs and such.
Yeah. Yeah, we initiated the program like Kyle talked and we actually send our jet crews out and we're cleaning these storm sewers on a, about a three-year cycle now. But in answer to your question, yes, we do have crews on call that go out and remove. One of the biggest things we remove, probably the most common thing we remove is deprecating rock. People went to landscape their boulevards with rock and that's very common and not even flood events like we've seen here. Our crews get all that ready to get that off the grates and then off the road. Tree debris, we send crew to clean out of that. In years passing, we've been with the really large events, the city's actually set logging trucks on top of the bridges and kept that stuff out of there, so yeah, there's on-call and looking for them.
For example, you know, my Arby's there, that's a low point in the road, so all, all the water goes and there's inlets on those low points. During those heavy events, you can, you can take out the surface debris to try to get more drainage out of them, but it doesn't make any sense to bring a back truck out and suck that up until that water goes down because all they're going to do is fill the truck up with water.
And some of those-
But that's something that really needs to be done after that event, after the water subsides, go clean those, some inlets out.
What I'm thinking is that during the storms, those inlets are getting clogged and as soon as they're clogged, there's no access to the-
Your road has-
And I understand that's, that's a much lower concern on the primary vessel than saving a bridge with a logging truck or cleaning up large debris in the roadway and those types of things, but it's something that may help with drainage. If, if those, like, I know when I go by, I see them and I, I unclog them, but you'll see, you know, there will be a leak there where if it's unclogged, that leak quickly drains.
Exactly. And it's, it's been a problem and it will be, I think we've gotten a lot better about cleaning them, but that's something we just need to keep up on with that. It's one of those maintenance things that needs to be done, so I hope, hope to keep those- So I hope, hope to keep those clean and open. Yes?
I see you included, I believe, at State Street South for a block. Is that a critical area?
No, that is actually, it kind of takes off from a project we did four, I don't know, probably six years ago. We replaced some store, our sanitary sewer in that area. And that area, that line is very flat. It probably doesn't even have any slope on it actually to the south. So when we redid that portion on the north side of Jackson, we, we put the new line and sewer manhole in the street. And then we tied on to the old one with the stub out being much deeper than the existing. So what we'll do in that situation is we'll open cut across there. We'll actually have adequate slope for the new main, and we'll set a new manhole on the backside so we can actually have some slope on the sewer main itself. And we'll minimize the risk of backups with the, the houses that are on that, on that line currently. So not, not in all cases are we gonna mine.
And then at the Jackson Bridge, are you looking at putting a bypass for the trail system there? So when it's snowed shut, or there's water in there that they can say, people can safely go across Jackson?
That's something we consider. We'd have to look at site distance and everything there too. Obviously, that's not shut down very often. You know, there are times like this that you just have to shut it down. So you kind of discourage going across there with all the traffic. But we'll have to look at that. I guess what I usually do if I don't go there, I'll go to the next intersection and go across there. But that's something we can look at. Unfortunately, the bridge is, it's at a high point, so you really don't want them crossing by the bridge because traffic from the other side is probably not gonna see them very well.
Yes, sir. Yeah, I have two businesses on Jackson, so we can keep an eye on this project. I guess I just have a couple comments or concerns. You know, I guess while we're doing this, I understand it all, you speak down. I hope you'll keep an eye on the function of our form on this project. You talk about, you know, the sidewalks in different areas are set back in certain sections that make it really, really unfunctional. Can't really ride a bike down, work down Jackson very well. The bridge is really a treacherous place to ride a bike. You kind of have to stop, get off your bike, figure out if you're gonna navigate pedestrians or whatnot. Certain properties like where I'm at at Barcoa is, the sidewalk is kind of set up different from where I'm at at Killian Stafford. And they're, they're filed different, they have different concerns and these. I mean, are you gonna do some things to unify all of that? Force property owners to unify or are you gonna address?
Well, we probably aren't forcing property owners. We don't, we probably don't have the time to do, if you're talking about a sidewalk assessment, forcible one. We don't have the time to do that. We like to work with the property owners and see what we can do there. In the past, we've had more success that way. So hopefully, we look, we can hopefully do some improvements like that and make, make sure it makes sense where those sidewalks are. The bridge is a very constricted point, and it's tough because there, there is a walkway that it's tight. It's four feet wide maybe. What we have talked about is maybe setting, you know, I don't, we won't be able to afford it on this project. But we're looking at setting up for the future, possibly a head ridge on the north or south side of that where it can be, it can be quite, and we can get bikes across that safe way. That's kind of what we're thinking now. We're just kind of in the beginning of it. But that is a bottleneck there, and it's hard, it's hard to get bikes through there safely. So that's one of the ideas that I was-
I mean, this is also a connected avenue between the campus and downtown.
It is, there's a lot of-
It's gotta be a big piece of your mind that you need to get students that may not have vehicles or may not have a vehicle or whatnot downtown, both as pedestrians and on bicycles.
Definitely. One thing that, you know, your next crossing is Nash Street. And one thing that helps is with Black Hill State just did, you know, they had, they have their major pedestrian slash bicycle link now coming right down on St. Joe.
Oh, what is it?
Oliver. Oliver. So in the future, we're looking at widening that sidewalk along Oliver to connect to our Rec Path to help, help alleviate that a little bit too. But you're right, it's, it's not really convenient along Jackson Boulevard.
I just don't know why you wouldn't begin to address that. And you're talking about landscaping and vegetation and all these other things. I don't want you to begin to do some of that while you're tearing everything out.
Yeah. And if we're gonna, if we're gonna be doing landscaping in there and having to tear out the sidewalk, then we'll put it in place and make some sense to it. We want, we want landowners to be involved in here and give us 13 cents. That's what's gonna be in front of their business when, when we're all done. And we want it to look nice, and we want it to be more attractive for their customers to come and visit Spiritfish. So, you know, we strongly encourage you to stay involved through this whole process and put your two cents in. Yes, sir.
You've got a, I believe, next year's budget, there's a Rec Path master plan update?
I believe so.
And is that scheduled so it'll be complete during the early phases of the streetscape so it can incorporate the pedestrian and bike traffic to the new master plan? Will they be in tandem or all that more?
I don't, I, I don't know yet. I don't know when we're gonna kick going on that. We really actually just talked about that, just this last budget hearing because we have a master plan in place, but the, the preference to where these are going has shifted. I mean, we're trying to get out to these areas where we've got a lot of people now. And we've basically shifted from east to west now. That's why we're kind of relooking everything, at everything. It's kind of all up in the air. We don't really have a solid plan now. We wanna reboot and make sure we're, we're putting these where they make the most sense and affect the most residents.
I anticipate we'll be dealing with Jackson Boulevard as a separate piece of this and then incorporate what we do to Jackson Boulevard into the rec master plan rather than getting the master plan done before the Boulevard.
Yeah, and the Oliver Street's a good example.
Right.
Change in that area.
Yeah, exactly.
Yes?
I have something to take here about water sewer replacement on State, right at the corner of State Campus. And-